To order, the President please rise for the flag of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to new spaces, a different corner of the room, but still our corner.
That's true.
Okay, this is the portion of the meeting that's reserved for public comment. Anyone here wishing to make public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items. Approval of the minutes of the August 27th board meeting and statement of receipts and expenditures for August 2018. The motion to approve those consent agenda items.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second in any discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes. So, moving on, action items and reports, superintendent's report.
Yes, so the last time that we met was our first day with staff. So, we just had our first day with staff, and since then, we've had the beginning of our school year, and we've had a great start to our year, and I really want to show appreciation to our teachers. In a typical summer, they're coming in over the summer, throughout the summer, getting their rooms ready, prepping, getting all those pieces, but with our construction projects that were occurring, none of them were able to get into that classroom until either that 27th, or even some of them not till the 28th. So, it was really a condensed amount of time that teachers were able to get into their classrooms, and so if you're an EC through 5th grade, or a 9th through 12th grade teacher, they had to put a lot of hours into it in a short amount of time. And I was joking with one of the teachers that it was probably the same amount of time that she would put in in a typical summer, but it just happened to be like in a four-day window. And so, there's a ton of people that were in here, late hours that week, into the weekend, even into that following week, people in late hours into the weekends, getting things ready, and I just really, we're really fortunate to have just a dedicated group of teachers that really work to make learning happen for our kids on the first day of school. There's still some things that are occurring, you know, with construction projects, and there's even still some unpacking that's occurring in various classrooms, but teachers really were ready for kids, made that learning experience on the first day very positive for our kids, and I really want to just thank our teachers for the dedication that they showed to our students, to our community, and to each other, and I just want to make sure their extra effort was noticed and appreciated by administration, and I know the board echoes that as well. So, that was a great thing. And then, Karen, if you can bring up that, the first couple slides there. On Friday, the 14th, we had all of our elementary students pose together for a picture with their new tee-shirt in their school colors. So, our slogan for the year is "United as One, Learning Together." So, as we brought three elementary schools to two, we, as we were meeting with parents last year, Michael and Craig and I meet with the parent groups from the three schools, talking about transition ideas for moving from three to two. One of the ideas that we had was to have a tee-shirt for all students and staff that would be in their colors, so kids would be able to start the year with a school tee-shirt that would go with that. So, we have the same logo on all of them, but you have Woodview that's going on here, and the next one would be Kennedy with their staff and student picture on that Friday, the 14th. So, great way to celebrate schools coming together, no matter where they were at last year, whether they're at Kennedy, or at Woodview, or GES, whatever it may be, you know, here we are now in a year where united as one, learning together. So, it's a great way to start the year, and then as we go on throughout the year, as we have spirit wear days, they at least have something immediately to wear, and was very favorably received by all of our students and families. So, and we really, families had to register, when they'd register for their students, they had to choose sizes, and we, literally, it was less than like a dozen that we had to follow up with. Parents were very responsive, right? It was a small number. We may have had more staff members forget to register than students, ironically, but a great opportunity to start the year on a positive note with our school colors in that way. And then, this week, it's homecoming week at the high school, and so, a lot of activities going on, the high school pajama day today. As you walk through, you'll see some of the different window decorations they did over the weekend. So, the theme this week is Hollywood premiere. So, each day, they have float building and powder puff practice occurring each night, started tonight, and then the festivities really kick off on Thursday night with the parade, starting at 7:00 from St. John's parking lot, and then, following the parade, they'll make their way to the high school, they have their pep rally, and the powder puff game at the stadium field, so under the lights of the juniors and seniors playing powder puff. And then, Friday night is the football game at 7:00 versus Hartford. We typically have our Hall of Fame ceremony, and the recipient of this year's Hall of Fame was not able to make it, that game, that Friday didn't fit with her schedule, so Scott is working with her and her family to pick a day in November, December, and I'm not sure if he has a final date yet, but they're picking a basketball game that her and her family can be here. She wanted everyone to be able to be here, she takes great pride in being a Black Hawk and wants to make sure we celebrate that appropriately, so instead of celebrating without her, we're obviously going to hold off on that and pick a time that's conducive to her and her family. So, that leads us, at 5:00 though, on Friday night, we will have our rededication ceremony at the high school. We'll have it, we'll start in the commons, and then, from there, Scott has 10 different students that will be giving, either student council students, or class officers, that will be giving tours at the high school to various locations throughout the thing, and then 7:00 is when the football game starts. And so, then we have, so then, following up with that, we have, the next item here is the Wisconsin School Board Week, and on October 7th through the 13th is Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week, and we are very fortunate to have a supportive, hard-working school board that puts the interest of kids first, and we want to take that opportunity to thank you on behalf of our community for all the extra hours that you put in. You know, at the annual meeting, we hear it's, you know, $1,350 and $14,900 for the year, and I don't want you to compute the hourly aspect to that, because then you might not run again, but we do know it does take countless hours, listening to community members, working with our staff, coming to meetings, but being visible in the community, hearing people's input. You know, the referendum is an example of that, taking input from people and working towards a common goal. So, we want to make sure we appreciate you in that way, and so, we have a press release that we're releasing tomorrow, going out to the newspapers, but in it will say, "The Members Serving Our District in Their Years of Service Are as follows: Board President Paul Lordy with 17 years, Vice President Kerry Walls with five, Clerk Joe Mail with three, Treasurer Mark Kaler with three, Steve Nada with two, Jerry Rossi with two, and John Skolman with one." And then, we're recognizing you on our electronic sign during the week of October 7th through the 13th. We'll be giving individual messages from administrators and staff, and then, we also have a special gift of a caramel apple from Sweet Trio at the September 24th board meeting. So, what we'd like to do is, we'd like to have you get into a group here, and Karen's going to take a picture of you with your caramel apple, and then, we will send that along to both News Graphic and the Ozaki Press for them to be able to put something in there for you. You're good. Whatever you want to do.
I'm standing right here.
Make sure she can see your face.
Am I in the way?
No. Just don't get in here too close.
One, please.
So, because the board, because, you know, the time we have our next board meeting, we thought tonight would be a great time to honor you and thank you for your service to our community and to our district, and so, we'll be sending that picture along with the press release, and, you know, apples is something that represents an education, a gift that, you know, is wholesome, and something from Sweet Trio, you take an apple and chocolate, it just seems to bring the best of both worlds together. So, make sure you take that home to your families, or you could eat it individually and just not tell them, I guess, but if they watch the YouTube, then they'll know that you shouldn't have done that. And then, last week, we had our building rededication ceremony, so I have some pictures here at the elementary schools. We had at Kennedy, we had some people, so we had in the hallway of the new wing for the 4th and 5th graders, right outside the LMC, so people that were in the hallway there, some of our...
Sorry.
Yep, that's good. You can see some of the student leaders that we had there, some of the 5th graders that took tour, that took people on tours throughout the buildings after we had some words and did a ribbon cutting, and the next picture, I think, is us cutting the ribbon, so we had the board there, we had students that were holding the ribbon and so forth, and then, we moved on from there and went to Woodview, and we used the new 4th and 5th grade wing there with that new hallway, so the exterior, that's the old exterior on the right-hand side, no matter where you're looking at, it's the right-hand side. And then, so, there's people that were there, and then, the next picture is our 5th graders that were the student helpers there, that were very proud of that, and we have a board member and a middle school principal who had kids in that picture, that were very excited and helpful with people, and they were, it was great to see the kids' excitement of showing people the different spaces and so forth. And then, we had our ribbon cutting that also occurred at Woodview. And then, we had some, then we had, it was great to see both at Kennedy and Woodview, we had a number of retired people that came back to walk through the classrooms and just see what it was like when I was a teacher in 1st grade, or when I was the art teacher, or I was the kindergarten teacher, whatever it may be. And then, we also had Urban Luisher, who was Woodview's first principal. So, back in 1969 to 1988, he came back, and it was great, he was, I showed him Michael's new office, and he was like, "Well, my office was better because it had a window to outside." And when we went to where the remodeled serving area is, he's like, "Where's the small little door that, all that was?" And just like, it was really great, just like, "Oh, that's right, I forgot how small it was." And so, it was great hearing his perspective on a lot of things, you know, seeing the TV in the hallway and so forth, "Oh, technology," you know, and some of those pieces. So, I took a picture with Paul and I, with him, right after the ribbon cutting, and then, he was talking to Michael, and I'm like, "We should get a picture of the current principal, as well as the first principal that we had at Woodview." So, it was great that he still had great memories of serving as the principal here, and it was really, it was a fun night. It was great to see the excitement of our community. We had families that were at the high school now, who used to go to Kennedy, or used to go to Woodview, that wanted to come in, they're like, "This is my one chance probably to see it," so they brought their high school kids in, even families that had kids at Woodview that then were, that wanted to go see Kennedy's place, so they went back and forth. So, it was really a fun night, an opportunity to showcase what the building looks like, both the new spaces, as well as the remodeled spaces, and we look forward to being able to do the same thing this coming Friday at the high school. And then, last but not least, something that's on here, is the Grafton Education Foundation has their Seeds to Harvest Annual Appeal that hopefully you receive something in the mail, and Mary Ellen Hogan is here, and she has a couple things to talk about from the Grafton Education Foundation, and I want to make sure the board and our community is aware of.
Well, you mentioned the Seeds to Harvest that has been going out in stages, so if you haven't got here, so you'll get it soon. We are on track for the Super Bowl, and we're happy to say that it's going to be back in Grafton this year in the facility that it was in before, which is not a bowling alley, but it is a banquet hall now. And so, we're happy to be able to, Sears has been amazing to us for the last few years, but we really wanted to have it back in Grafton, and there's a new, young team that is in charge of it this year, and they have a lot of great new ideas, there might be some other games, but there still will be, there will still be goals made by the students. So, then, our board has been really busy all summer rewording our mission statement and grant proposal guidelines, and we developed a separate gift proposal that we think is going to work better, and I'm happy to say, we just voted last Monday night that we'd be giving $12,000 to the district for hopefully the microphone, and we will be, you know, this just happened, so we are happy to be able to do that, and the board voted. Because of the FCC regulations, and the, you know, unfortunately, expense, the district wouldn't incur because of that, we were happy to be able to do that. And the funding need for the next Super Bowl, yeah, Super Bowl, they brought some ideas back, and the board, there was a couple ideas that Aaron said, and we decided to vote on the school store here at the high school that we weren't able to finish because of the construction, I understand, so we voted unanimously to support that for our funding need, and hopefully, you know, we can get that up and running, and it will be a nice moneymaker for whatever we decide to do in this store. I mean, I don't know, do you know what the...
So, that was the Hawks, now, so remember, we've done some renderings of that, and then, with, as we were looking at, we were hoping to have the money left over, it wasn't part of the referendum, but it was something that we got, an idea that would flow along with that concession stand area, so that would be a school store that our students would run, have apparel, have various things like that, that students could run as part of their class, and it would be an opportunity for...
And you were kind of thinking maybe district-wide, like have, you know, all schools, like, you know, if they're here for football games or basketball games, to be able to, maybe we can develop some common item that everyone would want, I guess, you know? So, that's really about it.
Yep. Yeah, great. So, you know, they partnered with us in a multitude of ways, and we appreciate their support, and, you know, the annual appeal is one of their, you know, I think it's one of their bigger fundraisers that you have.
Yes. It goes on for, you know, we send it out now, and we take donations as long as we can get them.
They don't turn it, you don't turn it away after a certain time?
No, no, and the community has been very generous, and...
Yep. So, I wanted to make sure we highlighted that in my report as well. Okay? And with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, Jeff. Thank you very much for that update on the Grafton Education Foundation. I think it's interesting to hear in both of those reports, the new energetic members, as you think about membership of the GEF.
Right, and the old people are getting old.
The tenured people are passing on their wisdom and their knowledge to the new people. And on behalf of the entire board, certainly thank you to administration. It isn't for the paycheck, I doubt, but anybody is sitting up here. Thank you to the community as well for the support that they've shown relative to the referendum, and relative just to the kids in general, as everyone is pulling in the same direction, to bring about better results for kids. So, thanks, Jeff. Okay, committee reports. All of the committees met last Monday on the 17th. We'll start with the Finance Committee.
So, yes, at the Finance Committee, we have representatives from Horkin there to go over our employee insurance plans, where we're at, where the renewals are coming in. They will be approved at the October meeting with the budget, but they have a 2% increase for medical, 0% for dental, and 2% for vision. You know, I would like to say a lot of that is a result of good participation from our employees in the wellness program, and so, that resulted in a good savings with a minimal increase to our health care, so.
Good. Thank you, Mark. Policy Committee, Steve.
Policy also, back to September 17th, we had two agenda items. We continue our discussion on Policy 830, which is a public use facility. I think we've kind of come to an agreement that we're going to look at a fifth category, and administration is going to go back and try to look at how we would draft some agreements to be consistent with other school districts in the area for the facility to use that. So, we do not have our next agenda for our next meeting schedule at this point, so it's something we'll come back once that gets done, but probably around the month of October, might be able to. The second item that we had was a new update this Thursday. Jeff, we have a kickoff meeting with them to start laying out that plan, and then, shortly thereafter, somewhere in October, we'll be starting actual meetings for laying that all into place, that we have that for the end of the school year. So, those are two updates, Mark.
Thanks, Steve. Last but not least, Mark, back to you for public-private partnership.
So, yeah, we had two items on the agenda that evening, too. We're looking at, either do we utilize an existing foundation or establish our own, and that is still, I would say, an open item to resolve. The second was kind of the organizational structure to carry this forward, which is actually coming on a future agenda item under item D, so we'll touch on it there.
All right. Thank you. Any questions relative to any of the committee meetings and work? Thanks, everyone. Then, moving on to the Personnel Report. Jeff?
So, we have, we have none that are for approval, but they are the informational ones that we want to make the board aware of. We have Gwen Felderbrook, who is our welcome desk, now with the new entrance that we have at the high school, we needed a welcome person there, so Gwen is at the welcome desk at the high school. And then, we have Leslie Hochstatter, Library Media Aid at Kennedy, Stacy Moes, Library Media Aid at Grafton High School, Crystal Palipski, Special Ed Aid at Kennedy, Patricia Strand, Special Ed Aid at Grafton High School, Tiara Whiteside, Special Ed Aid at Grafton High School, and then, our resignations, which we appreciate their service that they've given to us over the years, is Betty Sibulka, Library and Media Aid at Kennedy, and Michelle Wagner, who was Library and Media Aid here at Grafton High School. So, informational for the board.
Thank you. Going back then to facilities planning, enhancing our future. Mark, this is your item from B3 there, so Jeff, who's taking this one?
So, as Mark mentioned, we spent a lot of time at the Public-Private Partnership Committee developing a steering committee that would move us forward with our facilities planning. So, we are looking at facilities planning and using the slogan of "Enhancing Our Future." So, we think of our current budget, our 20-year maintenance plan as protecting our future, and we look at this opportunity as enhancing our future, so the things that we need that aren't covered in our regular budget. So, right now, we would look at our athletic fields, so we've done some work with athletic fields, also done some work, some preliminary work, looking at our auditorium, so we know those are two areas that need some enhancements that would not be coming in our regular budget, and so, this steering committee would be created in order to privately raise funds to be able to fund the priorities that would go with that. This would all be, the steering committee would be working towards projects and project priorities that are approved by the school board, and then, you can see the members of the steering committee would be the District Superintendent as the Chair, Director of Business Services, two Board of Education members, and a Chamber of Commerce member, and then, the larger group would be the Advisory Committee and membership, and that would be relative to specific projects. So, that could include, you can see the following, there's a list of members of the Advisory Committee based on a specific project, so whether it's in the academic, the athletics, the arts, or in other, and there'd be other people that could be added, you know, the final thing is other is applicable, could be multiple people that would come onto that Advisory Committee piece, depending on what the areas that we're looking to enhance.
So, at this time, I, just to recap, the Public-Private Partnership Ad-Hoc Committee of the Board was formed to determine and flesh out a structure upon which we can engage the community for purposes of identifying projects and then soliciting funds relative to those projects. I think the ad-hoc committee has now met its obligations and its goals, and as such, that committee would be dissolved, and this new steering committee would take over from that committee. So, I think it would be appropriate that there be a motion to adopt this structure as presented, as it relates to the formation of a steering committee and related membership for the facilities planning, enhancing our future. So, move. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes. Thank you, and thank you to the members of the ad-hoc committee for their work in moving it to this point. And I know some of you have volunteered to serve on that committee, will be working with Jeff as we look to fill that committee out. Okay, Personnel Report. We did that, we did D as well. Unusually hazardous transportation plan update. Item E.
Yes, so, we last updated our unusually hazardous transportation plan back in 2015. We, as we redrew boundaries and created two, two boundaries for two schools versus three, we created new bus routes that resulted from this, and we also ended up getting new walking routes. And so, what happened at the beginning of this year, there were a group of families that lived on the east side of the Milwaukee River, within a mile of Kennedy, that would need to cross Bridge Street over the Milwaukee River, and they reached out saying that they felt that this was a bit of a hazard to walk across that route. So, we looked into it, we noted that the, where Falls Road crosses the Milwaukee River, which has very similar aspects to it, with just one sidewalk on one side of the bridge crossing the river, we felt that these were very similar. We also note that we had never examined Bridge Street before, because it had never been a route to any school. The boundary that was formed when we had Grafton Elementary meant that if you lived on the east side of the river, you would walk to Grafton Elementary, you didn't have to cross the river. And then, same thing, if you lived on the west side of the river, you would walk to Kennedy, you wouldn't have to cross that river there. Whereas, Falls Road down in that area, being to the south, there were families who were in the Kennedy zone that would have had to have walked across the river, the bridge, to get to school. And now, with the redistricting, there are families who are going to Kennedy that now have to cross Bridge, and that was never a walking route before. So, we are, as a district, it is a new location, right at the end of the plan, attached in your packet, location N, that would designate Bridge Street, where it crosses the Milwaukee River, to be part of our hazardous transportation plan. Those families who would have to cross the river would be eligible for busing, and we would also be eligible to receive aid for those students that we bus. So, we are looking for a recommendation to update our UHT plan.
So, you have a motion?
I have the motion to update.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I was just curious, now that there is a crossing guard, and Woodview has been redone crossing 5th, I know there's a crossing guard there daily, is that still a hazardous area?
That's certainly something we could examine moving forward. It is currently part of our hazardous transportation plan.
The next step for us in this process is to meet with the sheriff and to show the sheriff the updated N, and we can bring that forward and ask that question as well.
So, this goes to the sheriff, and then DPI, is that what it was?
Yes. So, this will be submitted upon your approval, submitted to the sheriff for review. Once the sheriff signs off on it, it goes to DPI for their sign-off.
Karen, you're talking about the one south of the school, or north?
North.
Right. There's still the neighborhood pass that has no sidewalk, so it would just be more like the Deerwood Court.
Yeah.
I don't know, but that makes sense, as long as there's...
Yeah, because in previous years, there was never a crossing guard, but I noticed that there's now a crossing guard there, so it's a much easier crossing for those children.
Any further discussion? None, and then, all those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Certainly, thank you for the work that you've done in taking a look at this, and I would thank also, you know, those that may have been impacted by this change and bringing it to our attention. A lot of new things this year, and a lot of new things that perhaps hadn't been looked at in the past that need to be looked at for the first time, and engaging in the dialogue respectfully with all of our, with everyone who has kids coming to the school. We all want the same thing. We're all out for making sure that everybody's safe. So, when those items can be brought forward, and we can engage in a dialogue, we can have good things happen, so thank you very much, and thanks for taking a look at it. Okay, Summer Learning Academy Report.
Yes, and Laura Stotz, our Director of Pupil Services, will come and give us an update on that.
All right, I get to summarize the Summer Learning Academy, even though I wasn't here for it, so next year, I'll have some more firsthand experience to share with you. Okay, so there were 24 academic classes.
Can I interrupt you really quick? I'm sorry. Did they vote? Did they vote on that motion?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. That's good. Till I ask a question, like, I don't know, maybe they didn't. Yes, thank you. Okay, good job. Sorry, Laura.
That's all right.
Continue, please, I'm sorry. My apologies.
24 academic classes, math and reading, for grades kindergarten through 5th, and then, we had some intervention for elementary age, and then, we also had credit recovery at the high school for English, math, and social studies. A couple new things this summer, the intervention class was extended from four weeks to six weeks, which I understand those kids took advantage of. And then, there was also a class that was specially designed for kids with more significant disabilities that was discontinued this summer. They decided to try to get them to take more enrichment classes with their peers. There was more AIDS support provided to them. It was just an opportunity for them to have more peer modeling and more inclusion, and the feedback that they received from both families and from teachers was really positive. So, we also had 160 enrichment classes, 39 of which were randomly... So we also had 160 enrichment classes, 39 of which were brand new. So this really robust summer program saw an increased goal in the student enrollment, and then also the number of courses taken. So we had 49 additional students enroll this year, and we had 653 more courses taken. Just wait, nice jump. So if you look at the backside, we kind of have a nice graphic of both the number of students enrolled and the courses taken since the summer of 2011. Do you have any questions that I could answer? So really good, solid program.
Thank you very much.
We will bring, at the October meeting, we'll bring the FTE from that, but I just haven't calculated because of the budget and so forth, so we'll be bringing that. We wanted to get these numbers in front of you, because Laura says that is a great increase, and it's great to see people taking advantage of our summer academy in that way.
Okay, gift reports. We have two gift reports?
We do. So I have two of them. One is from an anonymous donor of donating granite countertops valued to be $1,000. And then one that is a contract that is something for John Long Middle School, they're using with 14 Foods. And Brett Dimmer has worked with this for, I believe, their PBIS, where they'd be able to receive 450 free small cone coupons for students who reach their reading or math goals, 72 achievement awards for weekly PBIS drawings in the value of $215, and then 18 buy-one-get-one 99 cent lizard coupons, and 99 cent chicken strip baskets for teachers who recognize students for PBIS. So the total value is $1,200. They put an ad in the Falcon Flyer four times a year, but because it is a contract, we are bringing it to the board for approval before we move forward at the middle school. So one is a donation, one is a contract that we need board approval for.
Do we take them independently, or together?
I would probably say they should be independent, because one's a donor that will send a thank you, even though it's anonymous, and we knew that is, we send a thank you to that person, thanking them for supporting our programs, and the other is a contract.
So then entertain a motion to accept the anonymous gift of granite countertops in the value of approximately $1,000.
Some more.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes. Then also entertain a motion to approve the contract for 14 Foods as presented. So move. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes as well. Always good to see donations, we certainly thank those who are doing as such, and I'm sure Jamie has a good spot for these. All right, student overnight trip request.
So we have two, two for the board to approve. One is an academic one, and one is an athletic one. The one is, the first one we'll talk about is the Fred Stern Celebration Jazz Festival at Lawrence University. And you can see Ms. Hart, who is the jazz teacher, as well as her husband would be the chaperone for that group. It's on Saturday, November 3rd, and Sunday, November 4th. So it's a Fred Stern Celebration Jazz Weekend hosted by Lawrence University, is, was started by Lawrence Eastman Professor Fred Stern, and provides students the opportunity to perform for, listen to, and study with professional jazz educators and performers from around the world. So Lawrence University is in Appleton, so we would ask for approval for that, as well as then the Boys and Girls Cross Country Overnight Trip to Blue Harbor, and I think it's, is it Manitowoc? It says Manny, Manitow, that they do. This is a twofold for the cross-country team. They have an intersquad cross-country race, and then they also use it as a team bonding experience for the athletes. So we've attached a roster, and you can see that per board policy, we do have both male and female chaperones also going along on the trip. So we'd ask for the board approval for these two trips.
Motion, does that affect? So move. Any discussion, questions? All right, say none. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Thank you, Jeff. And finally, construction updates.
Yes, so good news, the pool is back in use. Swimmers had practice tonight in there for the first time, so they will still have the opportunity to host two meets, as well as the conference meet at the end of the season. So it's great for student athletes, as well as our students in Fayette and our community to be able to start utilizing the pool. Deconstruction of Grafton Elementary School has begun. We do have some GES bricks that are available out by the tennis court. Spielvogel will be dumping some tomorrow. It's right across from the tennis courts in the old parking lot, in the west parking lot by the tennis courts. We have had some requests from people either calling or emailing, asking about the fill that's being stored there, and that's, that fill is actually being reused. It's fill that we've used, or even that others have dropped there from other sites, that once they take the concrete up and they take up the basement at GES, we're gonna have to fill that back in before we put the asphalt down. So it's a savings for us to go to store it there, and that'll be used in that way. So it isn't that, we even had people in the office laughing that they could use it at their house, and we were like, "Well, that's not what it's there for." But we did appreciate people reaching out and asking. So that will fill in that footprint and so forth. District office, so the parking, we were moved from where we typically park, in that west parking lot, and it was more, I guess, the east side of that, to now we're parking where you used to have the parking for GES. And then in the middle of this week, I believe by Wednesday or Thursday, parking for district office will be right where there used to be grass, right by the sign. So if you go down by there now, they've dug out a couple feet of dirt, they started laying some gravel at the end of the night. It's basically the connector from the, as the high school parking lot comes down, and now the driveway goes down and around, it will actually connect the district office, so you'll be able to access this side from 60, or an emergency vehicle come from the high school and get the district office more quickly instead of having to go around or trying to jump out on 60 and come back in. So that will become the parking area for a little while as they get ready for tearing up the parking lot and the green space there, as they create the new area that they'll have there. So a couple different things that are happening that you can see. Jamie has some more pieces to update us on as well that may not be as easily seen.
So, starting this week, Paul Crandall and associates from Grafton will be replacing the remaining roof sections at Kennedy. So that will take a minimum of three weeks. Over the next two to three weeks, we start taking occupancy of the new maintenance space. So that will give us the ability to unload the remaining two semi-trailers and several pods that are out there. That's an important piece for us, getting ready for the winter time, staging all of our equipment. And last, we have a new cleaning service, starting the season off, school year off of the cleaning service, extremely happy. There will be some growing pains, but at this point, we're very happy, and they're responding well to us.
And we're on track for the parking lot, I should have said this as a follow-up, but we're on track for the parking lot for district office and for the high school parking to be finished by the end of October. As we look at asphalt plants shutting down in that November timeframe, they have it set for curbing to be coming in, I think that first week in October. And then I think it's the third or fourth week of October is when we're looking, we have a date already set to pour some asphalt. So they poured asphalt today in front of the new commons area going around to the backside, so for our emergency vehicles, and we're on track for that to be available. The high school right now has a shortage of parking for students, and so we're hoping to be able to have that as begin in November for those students to be able to utilize, and then even for athletic events and other concerts that we'll be having over the winter season as well, that'll be available. We're on track for that. There's multiple projects that are still ongoing, that are occurring in the district, but there should be a minimal disruption to student learning at this point, and we're, we should have, by the end of the month, we should have our punch list for the elementary schools should be completed. You know, the high school is probably more in that December, January timeframe with the number of things that are going on at the high school with flooring, or with various other projects that need to occur. It'll be later in the year when that's fully finished, but we're moving forward, getting a punch list in those areas.
Any questions on the construction update? By and large, things are holding to the schedule that Hoffman has been proposing?
They are at this point.
Okay. Okay, good. All right. Then I would, no other questions, entertain a motion to convene and to close session to consider, one, sponsorship negotiation, two, deliberation or negotiation of the purchasing of public properties, and three, apparent request involving social and personal history. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 1985, 1E and F. Do you have a motion? Jerry, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you.